You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, 1331 North Fabens Street, Fabens, Texas, 79838. Roden Bridge Canatyo Warehouse, 191 Canatyo Avenue, Canatyo, Texas, 79835. Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
The Information Technology Department would like to remind users not to take the bait. Phishing is an attempt to obtain sensitive information such as usernames, passwords, and credit card details, often for malicious reasons by masquerading as a trustworthy entity in electronic communications. Phishing emails may contain links to websites that are infected with malware. Remember, do not open attachments or click on links from untrusted sources. Never send personal information in an email and keep your firewall and antivirus software updated. Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings! Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Sheriff Richard D. Wiles, the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Community Services Section, and Explorer Post 2005 present the 8th Annual Haunted House. For a spooky thrill, visit the Sheriff's Office Haunted House at 3850 Justice Drive. Opening day is Friday, October the 13th, and will be open every Friday through Sunday to include Halloween Day for the month of October. Operating hours will be 6 p.m. through 12 p.m. $10 for adults, $8 for children 12 and under, with everyone getting a dollar off with a canned food donation. All proceeds to benefit the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, Explorer Post 2005, a nonprofit organization.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barre started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Financial Recovery is a division under the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. The Financial Recovery Division regains monies from those who have exhausted resources throughout the judicial process. The authorization for the recovery of spent resources is by court order. These are resources initially funded by taxpayers. Financial Recovery Division's goal is to assist in making the county and taxpayers whole by replenishing funds into the budget to optimize services to the public. For more information, please visit the El Paso County website. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
I don't like the new webpage. I don't like, it's not as easy to find the agendas. Like I see the agenda for the 25th and 26th, but not for today. It's a pain in the butt.
Online?
Yeah.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, October 23rd, 2017. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Item number three, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is composed of items 3A through 3K. The County Administration Office would like to request the deletion of item 3J. Are there any other items that members of the public or the court would like to discuss individually?
Commissioners, any items you'd like pulled for consideration?
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, A, Resolutions. Approve and Adopt a Resolution Designating October 26, 2017-
They didn't pull J.
-as David L. Carrasco Job Corps Center Graduation Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Caesar. Judge, Commissioners, it gives me a tremendous amount of honor to be able to read this into the record. And as you can see, we have several great people from the Job Corps Center. And if you don't mind joining us at the podium while I read your resolution. Some of your students are a little reluctant, too. Whereas our nation's youth is one of our most valuable resources. And whereas the David L. Carrasco Job Corps Center, an outstanding career technical and education training program for the youth of El Paso and the surrounding areas, operated by the old management under the vision of maximum performance drives success. It has reached its 47th year helping them become responsible, employable, and productive citizens. And whereas our graduating class of the David L. Carrasco Job Corps Center will celebrate their accomplishments at 6:30 p.m. on October 26th, 2017, at the El Paso Community College Administration Service Center. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court of the County of El Paso hereby recognizes October 26th, 2017, as David L. Carrasco Job Corps Center Graduation Day. Sign this 23rd day of October, 2017, by the Honorable Members of Commissioners Court.
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning, thank you very much, Judge, Commissioners. It's a great honor for us to be here. I have our outgoing president, SGA, Student Government Association President, and then some of our new members that were just voted in. And this is a surprise because they hadn't been officially announced that they, he's our new Vice President, Treasurer, Sergeant, Sergeant at Arms, and then our Chief of Justice. My name's Eva Mariscal. I am an employee there, but also I'd like to everybody, let everybody know that I'm a former student. I've been with the Job Corps in that building for about 32 years. I was a student back in 83. And it's an honor to work there. It's an honor to serve these students. We have been serving the surrounding area for about 47 years. And we've got 16 to 24-year-olds there learning a trade. Some of them are high school graduates. Like these two are high school graduates and they were there to learn a trade. Others are, do get the opportunity to get their GED or their high school and of course a trade. So I'm gonna go ahead and step aside so they can introduce themselves and what they've learned and what they've gained from there.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Alejandra Savora. I studied there as an HVAC, HVAC technician? I've been there for almost a year. Oh, wow, that's long. The experience that I've had was very good. I've learned so much things. I've grown out of things. I've matured more. I've, yeah, I've learned a lot from there. I've learned a lot from Ms. Mariscal, from all the other employees and life lessons, things that they've gone through, things that, you know, stuff like that.
My name is Narum L. Perez. I'm studying for auto, auto tech. I've been there for seven months and I learned so much things in there. And I stay out of trouble. And right now I'm studying government for Ms. Mariscal and I've been learning a lot of stuff with her. And I've been helping out people more than I used to.
She was very afraid to get in front of the podium, in front of the mic, so she's, she's grown.
Hi, I'm Manuel Tez. I've been in Job Corps for about three months. I recently just joined Student Government, so I still have a lot to learn. But since I've been in Job Corps, it's helped me out a lot, not just with like the trades and with everything, but it's also helped me with my social skills and allowed me to talk to people more comfortably. So, yeah, it's a pretty good experience.
My name is Jonathan Marcus. I've been in Job Corps for almost four months and I've been doing great. I've been studying for Office Administration. And honestly, I've never done this. I'm nervous. And I met new friends and stuff. I've been doing good at school. Been studying a lot. And I hope I could get a great career after this.
Hello, my name is Lisa Fernanda Sapien. I'm studying Rehab Technician. I am being studying like almost two months. I don't speak English very well, but I'm trying to learn more. I get my GED last week and I'm proud of me 'cause now I'm in a student government and I'm the treasurer in Job Corps.
You know, I've gotta say, you're doing a great job. I had the honor of meeting Mr. Carrasco many years ago. And what a legacy he has left. And also, the Job Corps Center was the number one center in the entire U.S. for many, many, many years. And I know it'll be right back up there pretty soon. Congratulations. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. A round of applause. I'd like to shake your hand.
Item number 4B. Approve and Adopt a Resolution Designating October 28, 2017, as El Paso Coyotes Day in El Paso County, Texas.
All right. Good morning, Judge and fellow Commissioners. I have the honor of reading this resolution. And we have some of the folks from the Sports Commission, as well as the team, the Coyotes, the coach as well. Whereas the El Paso Coyotes are an American professional indoor soccer franchise based in El Paso, Texas, and begin their second professional season on Saturday, October 28. And whereas the team made its debut in the Major Arena Soccer League with the 2016-17 season, and whereas the El Paso Coyotes has added to El Paso County's roster professional sports and entertainment items, improving and building upon the quality and spirit of life in the border region. And whereas our community supports local sports that improve our sense of identity, integration, and pride in our community. And now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court that October 28, 2017, be recognized as El Paso Coyotes Day. Sign this 23rd day of October, 2017, the Honorable Commissioners Court.
Second. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. We're very happy. We're very honored. And thank you, David, for this beautiful resolution. For us, it's an honor. It's the first time. And we would like to emphasize that we're trying to do our best to bring something positive for our community, for our youth. And we're excited to start this coming season. We just arrived from Phoenix. We went to three preseason games. And thank God we won all three games. So I hope that's good news. And-
Say that again?
We won all three games. It was one in Denver and two in Phoenix. We just arrived at 6 a.m. this morning. And my business partner, Arturo Carrasco, and myself were very honored to be here. And we hope we can bring something very positive for our community. We're trying our best and improving year after year. We got new players also. We got several players that they play with the Mexican national team. Today, we're gonna receive another player that is coming from the World Cup in Africa, in Tunisia. So this year, we decided to bring high-quality, better-quality players so we can perform better. We're very thankful for everything you're doing. And at this point, I would like to present Mr. Brian Kennedy. He is the president of Paso Sport Commission. And thanks to El Paso County Coliseum, to him, you know, we can perform and we can play in this beautiful city. Thank you so much.
So you were gonna talk about, you have a media day coming up?
Oh, yes, I forgot. And thanks for reminding me. This coming Thursday at 11 a.m., we're gonna have our media day. And we would love to see you, all of you there. It's gonna be at 11 a.m., the Hilton Garden Inn at the airport. And we'll send you an invitation, of course. Okay? Thank you so much.
I was just gonna say, when you have partners like this, our job is much easier. We talked for years trying to get this put together. These are great guys. They've committed to make El Paso a winning team. And Commissioner, I'd like to thank you for the proclamation. Judge and Commissioners, thank you very much. If you, anybody who hasn't, I want, this is to everybody watching, anybody who hasn't seen an arena soccer game, when you come, make sure you get your refreshments early 'cause it's exciting going from the very first minute to the very last minute. It is soccer, but it's unlike any other soccer you've ever seen. And, and I'll tell you what, you're gonna have a good time bringing the whole family. There's reasonable prices. And they start this Saturday. It's the first game, 7:05 this Saturday, which is, that happens to be the Coyote Day, Commissioner, as you're well aware. And they're playing the Barracudas, so we'll have fresh fish at the Coliseum. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number 4C. Approve and Adopt a Resolution Recognizing the Week of October 23rd through the 31st, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week in El Paso County, Texas.
Yes, I would like to invite Virginia Hernandez and Art Cusado to the podium while I read the resolution. They're with the Young Marines. I was honored to be able to see them in action a couple weeks ago at the Diaz event. And a great group of young kids. So, and talking, they, we talked about this resolution, so I'll be honored to read it now. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of the organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizens are one of the most effective tools-
and community leaders know that citizens are one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas, the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration Agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas, the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas, the October 23 through 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso Judge and Commissioners Court that the week of October 23 through 31st be recognized as Red Ribbon Week. We urge all citizens to join in this special observance. Signed by the, the 23rd day of October, 2017, by the Honorable Commissioners Court.
Second.
Well, thank you very much for having us here.
Just give us a second.
We gotta vote, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good morning.
Well, good morning, gentlemen. My name is Art Saucedo. I'm the Unit Commander for the West Texas Young Marines. We've been in existence for a little over five years. Our main purpose is to teach kids how to stay off drugs, how to fight drugs. I know October is designated as a month to fight drugs, to be more aware about drugs. However, we wanna make the whole year part of staying away from drugs. So the West Texas Young Marines are here to actually educate all the, the, the kids, the community about drug awareness in the month of October. We're also gonna be having a 5K fundraiser at
Tovin Park, Nation's Tovin Park.
Nation's Tovin Park on the 28th. I invite you guys to come out here. We'll have a good time out there. So I hope you guys show up. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to mention, part of the Young Marines is, the Young Marines is a youth education and service program for boys and girls ages eight through completion of high school. The Young Marines Program promotes the mental, moral, and physical development of its members. The program focuses on character-building, leadership, and promotes a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. My name is Regina Hernandez. I'm the agent to the program. I'm kinda new to the program, but it's a very good program as far as youth and promoting awareness, leadership skills for our youth that are in our program, and also them promoting to the people that they are around in school, in their communities, to be good leaders, to be good citizens. And that's the main purpose of our program, is to promote drug-free awareness.
Thank you very much for being here this morning.
Good morning. Item four D. Approve and Adopt a Resolution Recognizing the Month of October, 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have the distinct honor of reading this resolution into the record. I could ask those that are here to speak on that to please join us at the podium. Whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to symptomatic use of physical, emotional, sexual, physical, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers, and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas, in 2017, at least seventeen El Paso residents have lost their lives due to domestic violence. And whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas, the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence receives over three hundred and fifty calls on the crisis hotline per month, provides shelter to nine hundred residents per year, and advocates for safety and justice for an additional twenty-nine hundred El Paso survivors. And whereas, the survivors of domestic violence themselves have been at the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby recognize the month of October, 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to actively participate in all scheduled activities and programs that work toward improving victim safety and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as a whole. Signed this 23rd day of October, 2017, by the Honorable Commissioners Court.
Second. Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. It's nice to be back again this week. Thank you for having us and, and thank you for sharing the proclamation. Last week, we talked about Texas victims and specifically those persons in El Paso who lost their lives to domestic violence. This week, however, I'd like to focus just a little bit on the prevention efforts that the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence are doing in our community in, in connection with our community partners that are connected to the work that you're doing. Specifically, the Juvenile Probation Department, we have a strong relationship with that program and are providing our teen intervention and prevention program as a way for youth who have been involved in some kind of family violence to learn about how to reestablish healthy relationships and for the family dynamics to change. Both students and parents are required to participate in that as part of the probation court order. And what we have found over the last five years that we've been doing this is that for those who stay in the program, we have a ninety-five percent success rate. So that's really remarkable and we appreciate our partnership with Juvenile Probation Department. Secondly, I'd like to point out that we work every day with the Sheriff's Department. And their officers are trained. They respond to domestic violence calls. And we really appreciate their understanding of the complexities of this issue and recognize that responding to a domestic violence call, as Commissioner Leon will attest to, is one of the most dangerous situations that a law enforcement officer can face. And so we really appreciate the Sheriff's Department efforts. Finally, I'd like to point out, if you saw perhaps last week, we have launched on a project in northeast El Paso with Andrews High School and the four middle schools that feed into that high school through a grant with the Office of Violence Against Women and in partnership with the Child Guidance Center, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and EPISD to really institute some prevention efforts and community collaboration efforts to reduce violence, especially with our youth. Because if we can focus our efforts there and, and get this high level of success, we feel like our families ultimately will be stronger. So thank you for your time today. We appreciate that. I'd like to also point to the terrific staff that we have, Janelle and Sandra, as well as Luis and Cesar, who every day are working with survivors of family violence and doing a great job.
And on that note, in regards to collaboration, we actually have an item on our agenda to approve a grant for the District Attorney's Office today to help combat domestic violence in our community. And I know that you partner with them as well.
Yes.
And so we appreciate all that you're doing and the partnerships that you've forged. And, and we will do all that we can to help combat this unfortunate cycle that occurs. So thank you for everything that you do.
You're welcome. Thank you.
A round of applause, please.
Item number five, Public Comment.
Mr. Nav, I believe we have two individuals signed up for public comment.
Yes, sir.
And we will begin with Mr. James Perry, followed by Mr. Pierre Andre Uzadiga.
Mr. Perry.
Good morning.
Good morning. I want to commend the county commissioners in El Paso for appointing County Judge Rubin. He's a good Texas X. He went to UTEP, but he's a Texas X. That's what I tell the students over there. So I would like to see you run for County Judge for El Paso the next time they have an election. And you're doing a good job. And thanks a lot for representing this community. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Pierre Andre Uzadiga. Good morning.
Your Honor, good morning. Welcome again. I got a glimpse last week, so I don't think I missed out. I was tuning in. And again, welcome. I know you'll do well. I asked you this morning if you were ready to work, and you said you were. And I believe you. I'm here because of the flag, or flags that I represent, which is this one. I don't have a big one, but I have this little one, this little one, and of course, the green and white one is my biggest. But we need to get used to these flags being together because this is a free nation, Your Honor. And a free nation unites. It's the United States of America. And Texas is an economic powerhouse. Texas leads the country in many, many industries presently. And that's why it's important for us to stay in tune with our benchmarks. I know there's a huge announcement set to be made this month on the two programs that I submitted. Program one was the First Time Offenders. Program two was the Possession of Marijuana. And it's important for us to stay in tune or on point with these policies in order to bring us closer to uniting ourselves, to generating taxes, to securing our border, increasing response times from police departments. How do you do that? You decriminalize marijuana. It's a cost-saving measure, gentlemen. And so we only have seven, eight days by the end of the month. Do I have to submit a resolution, a permission for a resolution? I know this is not a time for dialogue, but I know if I ask, if I do ask a question, I can get a response. I don't know if I'll have time to ask a question, but I do wanna point out some important education literature. We had Red Ribbon Week. This is education. I don't wanna bash heads with Red Ribbon Week. The reason people refer to this as a drug is because of the Controlled Substances Act. It labels us as a drug. But this is a Time Magazine special edition. The whole thing is about marijuana. And there's a part in here about El Paso, if I can read this really quick.
Real quick, real quick, could you please stop hitting other people with the flag?
I'm sorry?
Stop hitting people with the flag.
Am I hitting people?
You are hitting people with the flag.
I apologize. I just wanna make sure that these, the people who, I represent a group of people who are frightened because we have an unconstitutional quality of life. And I am dead serious when I say I'm going to lead marijuana industry here in the United States of America, but I need my commissioner, I need the courtroom's help. I need to, I need a platform where I can perform. I have no platform to perform. Even as an independent contractor, my business is suffering now because I'm trying to fight for a constitutional quality of life for my family as well as myself. And so that's why I rock the flag, and forgive me. I am American. I'm here as an American, as an American. But let me read this really quick, 'cause Time Magazine talked about El Paso. In the, if you want to blame somebody for America's marijuana obsession, you might well start with Pancho Villa. In the early 1910s, tens, thousands of Mexicans escaped the torment of the Mexican Revolution by crossing into Texas border towns like El Paso and Laredo. They brought with them the wide-brimmed sombrero, a delicious menu of savory foods, and an intoxicant known as marijuana. In 1914, El Paso became one of the first American cities to outlaw marijuana. This is right off of Time Magazine. El Paso County, we need to get to work. I need to generate taxes. I need to create a job for myself. I'm pretty good at creating jobs. I've created landscaping jobs. I've created candy-selling jobs. I've created all sorts of pharmaceutical jobs. You all have my resumes. I need the opportunity to create jobs in this industry so that the county court, the, the, the county building, our administrative processes, that quality control behind that is improved. Response times, response times. We need to work on that. Eight days, Your Honor. This, let's make history together. History, history. You're, you're gonna, you're gonna solidify your careers, each and every single one of you. I don't care if you're Democratic, Republican. As Americans, we need to unite for that red, white, and blue flag, more importantly. More importantly, I just want people to know why I'm here.
Time.
If they just, if they're just seeing me. That's, that's all. But I'm dead serious. I will be number one. I will be number one with your help. I have investors who are well aware, but I need to prove to them that we can cooperate and collaborate amongst ourselves intelligently, intellectually. You and I have sat down before you were, Your Honor. And I remember your words. I remember a lot of things. And I know we can work well, continue to work well. And I have one more week before I have to change my plan of action because November's coming in and I do have to change my plan of action. So before I go, I wanna ask you a question. What is there left for me to do, Your Honor, before I go?
I'm sorry, Mr. Uzadiga. Time, I apologize. And as you know, this is not a time for us to, to dialogue, but feel free to please meet with each member of the court.
What is there left for me to do?
So, thank you.
Anything?
Appreciate it.
Sir, during public comment, where Commissioners aren't allowed to answer questions because
Veronica Escobar, when she was here, I asked a question and I got a response. She's no longer here. So what is there left for me to do? As an American, I'm asking you. As a Texan. Texan means friend. As a friend, what is there left for me to do? I have to report to my probation officer right now. If you don't believe me, the cameras can follow me downstairs to the lower level. And I'm gonna walk into the probation officer's office with my flag. Excuse me. But I am trying to showcase my point. My plan of action will change if necessary, but let's unite, gentlemen. Let's unite. I'm dead serious. Number one, in the entire state of Texas and in the country, I promise you, Emerald Star Global Industries will lead the marijuana industry.
Thank you.
Well, we need your help. Thank you so much for your day. I know you're gonna do good. I just know you will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good day. God bless.
I think that is all for public comment, Mr. Nav.
Thank you, Judge. Continuing on with item number six, Judiciary Incorrections. Approve and authorize the County Judge to accept a Domestic Violence Unit Grant Award from the Office of the Governor of Texas on behalf of the District Attorney's Office in the amount of $150,000 with a cash match of $118,024.27 for the grant period of September 1st, 2017 through August 31st, 2018, for a total project in the amount of $268,024.27. Funding is available in account GF Domestic Violence Transfer Out Grant Match, contract number 2017-0617.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Vaca and I'm an Assistant District Attorney. I'm also the project manager of this particular grant, the Violence Against Women Act and the Domestic Violence Unit. I'm here to ask, I am pleased with you all, if you could please accept and authorize this award so that we can continue the good work that we do in the District Attorney's Office. I also wanted to go ahead and say thank you all. You guys have been extremely good to us. Last year, you observed one of our positions, the, actually the Domestic Violence Clerk. That, that position used to be under the VAW grant. Now it's under the county. So we are very, very grateful for that.
This is not the first time that this award is given to El Paso County, I believe, right?
No, no, you're right, Judge. This award has been with the DA's office ever since I took over this position, which has been nine years now. And I believe it's been with the DA's office longer. I'm gonna guess, and don't hold me to this, probably like fifteen, sixteen years that we get awarded every year to continue to fight domestic violence in our, in our county.
And I've seen the numbers go down. So congratulations in terms of the, the calls that are coming in. And so I'm hoping that all the work that you're doing is having an impact in El Paso.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. The numbers have been going down every year, the cases that get referred to our office as far as domestic violence-related cases. So I believe the So I believe the work that we do, along with the work that you all do to help us fight domestic violence has made this community safer.
Commissioners, any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much for being here this morning.
Thank you. You all have a good day.
Item number seven, litigation, justice, and law enforcement. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the fiscal year 2017 Homeland Security Grant Program Award for Operation Stone Garden in the amount of $1,800,000 for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, El Paso Police Department, Anthony Police Department, Horizon City Police Department, Socorro Police Department, and San Elizario Marshal's Office from October 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2019. There is no cash match required. Contract number 2017-0711.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Isabel Hernandez from the Grants Administration Department under Budget and Fiscal Policy. Our grant this year for fiscal year 17 is for the same amount as we received last year, but for this year, we're happy to say we're including a new law enforcement agency, which is the San Eli Marshal's Office. And with that, we all made adjustments to include them for this same amount as we received last year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good afternoon. Do we have members here to present on item eight? I don't see anybody in the audience.
For item eight, we already have an executive session item, so the county attorney's office is requesting that the Commissioners Court delete this item, the regular agenda item. Please.
We need a motion to delete it. So moved?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Escobar, excuse me, Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can't shake it, huh?
Fairness, it's been five years.
I might have answered.
Item number nine, human resources. Approve and authorize the revision to the, of the El Paso County, El Paso's Performance Management and Evaluation Policy.
I believe that the Human Resources Department was going to present on this. I know we received a presentation on Thursday. I don't know if, Joel, do you know if they were gonna come back in for that? Or?
Betsy's notes said that they were going to give a brief overview to the public, but that it was what they already presented on Thursday.
Okay.
Let's skip and...
Perhaps we can postpone this item and come back to it.
Okay.
Brings us to Public Works, item number 10, and we have a correction to announce for item number 10. From the county attorney's office, the item should read, partially rescind order dated October 2nd, 2017, Agenda Item 12, only to the extent that it authorized the county judge to execute the state infrastructure bank loan agreement and pass a new order authorizing the county judge to execute a corrected state infrastructure bank loan agreement and a resolution to address non-substantive corrections in the loan agreement. All other provisions ordered by the court on October 2nd, 2017 remain unchanged.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Norma Palacios, Public Works Department. I'll go ahead and present on this item. I think Signe had placed the item on the agenda. But on December 15, 2014, Commissioners Court adopted a restructuring of the debt obligations related to the 2013 El Paso County Comprehensive Mobility Plan. On October the 2nd, Public Works brought an item to the court requesting authorization to execute the state infrastructure bank loan agreement, including the, including a resolution. Today, we're bringing this item back, just requesting authorization to rescind a portion of the agreement in order to address non-substantive corrections in the loan agreement. Public, I'm sorry, the county attorney's has reviewed this item, and we're requesting approval today.
And Norma, if I'm correct, this is just to remove reference to the...
TRC, yes, this is just for that.
Commissioners, any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11, approve and authorize the new fee schedule for parks and special event programming as presented to the court at the special meeting of October 19th, 2017. Further, approve and authorize the implementation of the new parks and special event fee schedule with the sports, sports park fees to take effect on January 1st, 2018, and all other fees to be effective November 1st, 2017.
For the record, Norma Palacios, Public Works Department, in an effort to, to be more effective and better serve the community, on Thursday, October the 19th, the Public Works Department presented to the court some proposed changes to the existing fee schedule that had been adopted in September of 2016. The proposed changes included the removal of the Columbus Day holiday from the $5 entry fee, an addition of a three-tier parking fee for special events, increase to the rental of the pavilion, as well as a housekeeping fee, increase in cost for commercial and for-profit special events held at the park, an addition of a two-tier option for not-profit rentals of special events, the availability of staff, of a staff member to support any events if needed. We are also proposing an addition of a non-refundable fee for applications and permits that are submitted. We are also proposing a change in opening and closing dates for the pools, as well as house, as, as well as hours, hours of operation, a change in admission fee for the escarate park. Addition, we're also proposing to add swimming lessons, and we're also proposing addition and additions to the, to account for the proper inventory that is available to be, to be rented out. At the sports park, we were proposing change to the number of games per season. And we were also proposing an addition, additional, I'm sorry, we're proposing a non-refundable security deposit if, during tournaments, if it is not canceled within 30 days. And last, we, at the sports park, were proposing a change to the schedule for the batting cages. Those are the proposed items that we had provided to the court. Today, we're requesting approval of those fees.
And I know that we discussed this at length during Thursday's special session meeting. Is, are you going to be advertising these changes? I know that there's a robust Facebook page that a lot of our patrons might frequent, so I wonder if we can't put all the changes on one document and put that out to the public?
Yes, sir. If the court approves this today, what we will do is we will clean out the document and do a press release in which we can share this information with the constituents.
Can, can you just go over real quick the, the, the three-tier parking fee for, for escarate, just so that people know?
Yes, sir.
I know you're gonna post it, but I think that's one of the most, probably, probably one of the...
For the parking fees.
People are gonna be more curious about.
We used to have in place, or we currently have in place, parking fees for, for the special events. And so, anything from 1 to 749 cars coming into the parking lot would pay $2. If the attendance exceeded 750, it's $5. We're making changes to those. So now, we're proposing that if attendance is 1 to 750, we, we have the $5 fee. If we have, from 750 to 3,000... I'm sorry, let me see. Okay, but this would only be during special events. So from 100 to the 3,000 would be the $5 fee. If it exceeds the 5,000, I'm sorry, the 3,000, we're going to a $10 fee. Then, we're also proposing to, to implement a 1 to 750 walk-in fee. This one initially was, it's free, and this is where we're increasing from 750 to 3,000, we go to a dollar fee for patrons walking in. And then, if attendance exceeds the 3,000, we would go to the $5 fee. Does that make sense?
I just wanted to follow up, Norma, that...
Yes, sir.
I know you touched on it, but will all, will all these changes be on our website, on the county's website?
We're going to, we're proposing, I know we've been working on our website to make everything that we offer available, and so, yes, sir, we're proposing on having it there as long, as, as, as well as doing the press release.
So effective, when will the, this be posted if we approve it today?
We're gonna go back and, and just make the adjustments to the fee, and we should have it by the end of the week.
So just, just to, just to clear, for driving in between 1 and 3,000, it's $5 fee, and it's more, if it's more than 3,000, it's a $10 fee?
Yes, sir.
And for walk-in, between 1, between 1 and 750, it's a $1 fee, and above 750, it's a $5 walk-in fee?
Walk-in 1 to 750 is free.
1 to 750 is free?
As, it increases, and it goes from 750 to 3,000, then it's a dollar.
$1.
And then, from, if it exceeds 3,000, then it's $5.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, this reflect, I know the backup, I think it's the same backup we received on Thursday, but which you're presenting, is it reflective of the changes that we discussed on Thursday?
Yes, sir, it does. We, and actually, the backup is new. We've had updated the backup. We did leave what was existing, but gave you what we're proposing. If the court approves it, we'll go ahead and delete anything that's, doesn't apply anymore, and that's what we will provide the constituents on our website as well as the press release.
Do we need to rediscuss the, so for example, the pool, the fee structure, the outline pools? We discussed keeping that the same?
Because we're keeping it the same, that's not a proposed change, so those fees will stay in place.
The only change will be at the escarate park pool, it'll go from $2 to $3, correct?
Yes, sir. The outer pools will remain the same.
Any other questions, Commissioners, concerns?
I move to, to approve the, the changes outlined in the, in the backup, the, the new backup.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Navas, we could go back to item number nine, please?
Thank you, Judge. Item number nine, human resources. Approve and authorize the revision of the County of El Paso's Performance Management and Evaluation Policy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judges and Commissioners. Michelle Cochran with the Human Resources Department. Sorry, it's a little high, and I can't get further over at this time. We come to you this morning to discuss the approval of the policy that we presented to you last Thursday, our new performance management and evaluation policy that will allow us to implement the plan that we presented to you on Thursday. I'm sorry. Thank you. If you'll recall, the significant changes to the plan and policy are moving from an evaluation timeframe, from an annual evaluation, to a fiscal year evaluation time period, moving from a numerical rating system to a more goal-oriented, oriented performance system, and then fostering a coaching and guidance environment between managers and employees. If you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to address them with you.
Commissioners, and I assume this will take effect immediately, or when are we rolling this out?
Immediately. With your approval today, we have our training schedule ready to be published right after this meeting on our intranet, so supervisors can sign up for training starting tomorrow.
Excellent. I move to approve. There are no questions by any of the Commissioners.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
You too. Thank you.
Item number 12, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number Two to the County of El Paso's 2017-2018 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $913,266, increasing the overall budget of $412,278,363 to $413,191,629.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. One, one budget amendment in general fund in the tax office, changing the communications general in the amount of $7,222 to communications telephone. That's the more appropriate account for these types of expenditures. Within special revenue grants, setting up an $80,000 grant, receipt of federal funds for the Fabin's Airport Design Project 2018, all of which will be capital construction. Special revenue grants, Fabin Airport Construction Project 2018, $666,600 federal grant, all for capital construction at the airport. Lastly, under grants, special revenue is the Fabin's Airport Fencing Grant 2018, federal funds passed through the state, $166,666, also for capital outlay for the fence construction. One amendment within special revenues is eliminating the account category over cash receipts and setting it up under the category of fines and forfeits for the sheriff's state forfeiture funds, as clarified from the revenue estimates received from the county auditors. Would ask for your favorable consideration.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge Vogt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
This brings us to Executive Session Item 13. Commissioners Court will now recess into Executive Session to discuss items 13A through 13H pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications, and doing so is easy? In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge, and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coastthenumber2coast. or simply print the card at www.coastthenumber2coastrx.com. Happy savings. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number nine one five, five four six, two zero four eight.
Sheriff Richard D. Wilds, the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Community Services Section, and Explorer Post 2005 present the Eighth Annual Haunted House. For a spooky thrill, visit the Sheriff's Office Haunted House at 3850 Justice Drive. Opening day is Friday, October the thirteenth, and will be open every Friday through Sunday, to include Halloween Day for the month of October. Operating hours will be six PM through twelve PM. Ten dollars for adults, eight dollars for children twelve and under, with everyone getting a dollar off with a canned food donation. All proceeds to benefit the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, Explorer Post 2005, a nonprofit organization.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at nine one five, five four six, two one one nine, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Financial Recovery is a division under the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. The Financial Recovery Division regains monies from those who have exhausted resources throughout the judicial process. The authorization for the recovery of spent resources is by court order. These are resources initially funded by taxpayers. Financial Recovery Division's goal is to assist in making the county and taxpayers whole by replenishing funds into the budget to optimize services to the public. For more information, please visit the El Paso County website.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, 1331 North Fabens Street, Fabens, Texas 79838. Roden Bridge Canatyo Warehouse, 191 Canatyo Avenue, Canatyo, Texas 79835. Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938.
The Information Technology Department would like to remind users not to take the bait. Phishing is an attempt to obtain sensitive information such as usernames, passwords, and credit card details, often for malicious reasons by masquerading as a trustworthy entity in electronic communications. Phishing emails may contain links to websites that are infected with malware. Remember, do not open attachments or click on links from untrusted sources. Never send personal information in an email and keep your firewall and antivirus software updated.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings! Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Sheriff Richard D. Wiles, the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Community Services Section, and Explorer Post 2005 present the 8th Annual Haunted House. For a spooky thrill, visit the sheriff's office haunted house at 3850 Justice Drive. Opening day is Friday, October 13th, and will be open every Friday through Sunday to include Halloween Day for the month of October. Operating hours will be 6 p.m. through 12 p.m. $10 for adults, $8 for children 12 and under, with everyone getting a dollar off with a canned food donation. All proceeds to benefit the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. Explorer Post 2005, a nonprofit organization.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at sserna@epcounty.com for any information.
Financial Recovery is a division under the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. The Financial Recovery Division regains monies from those who have exhausted resources throughout the judicial process. The authorization for the recovery of spent resources is by court order. These are resources initially funded by taxpayers. Financial Recovery Division's goal is to assist in making the county and taxpayers whole by replenishing funds into the budget to optimize services to the public. For more information, please visit the El Paso County website.
...
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, 1331 North Fabens Street, Fabens, Texas 79838. Roden Bridge Canatyo Warehouse, 191 Canatyo Avenue, Canatyo, Texas 79835. Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938.
The Information Technology Department would like to remind users not to take the bait. Phishing is an attempt to obtain sensitive information such as usernames, passwords, and credit card details, often for malicious reasons by masquerading as a trustworthy entity in electronic communications. Phishing emails may contain links to websites that are infected with malware. Remember, do not open attachments or click on links from untrusted sources. Never send personal information in an email and keep your firewall and antivirus software updated.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings! Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Sheriff Richard D. Wiles, the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Community Services Section, and Explorer Post 2005 present the 8th Annual Haunted House. For a spooky thrill, visit the Sheriff's Office Haunted House at 3850 Justice Drive. Opening day is Friday, October 13th, and will be open every Friday through Sunday to include Halloween Day for the month of October. Operating hours will be 6 p.m. through 12 p.m. $10 for adults, $8 for children 12 and under, with everyone getting a dollar off with a canned food donation. All proceeds to benefit the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, Explorer Post 2005, a nonprofit organization.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or a current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Financial Recovery is a division under the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. The Financial Recovery Division regains monies from those who have exhausted resources throughout the judicial process. The authorization for the recovery of spent resources is by court order. These are resources initially funded by taxpayers. Financial Recovery Division's goal is to assist in making the county and taxpayers whole by replenishing funds into the budget to optimize services to the public. that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 AM at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trent Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering soundbags at no cost or requirements to the public and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, 1331 North Fabens Street, Fabens, Texas 79838. Roden Bridge Conithio Warehouse, 191 Conithio Avenue, Conithio, Texas 79835. Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938.
The Information Technology Department would like to remind users not to take the bait. Phishing is an attempt to obtain sensitive information such as usernames, passwords, and credit card details, often for malicious reasons by masquerading as a trustworthy entity in electronic communications. Phishing emails may contain links to websites that are infected with malware. Remember, do not open attachments or click on links from untrusted sources. Never send personal information in an email and keep your firewall and antivirus software updated.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coastthe number two coastrx.com. Happy savings! Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Sheriff Richard D. Wiles, the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Community Services Section, and Explorer Post 2005 present the 8th Annual Haunted House. Opening day is Friday, October 13th, and will be open every Friday through Sunday to include Halloween Day for the month of October. Operating hours will be 6 p.m. through 12 p.m. $10 for adults, $8 for children 12 and under, with everyone getting a dollar off with a canned food donation. All proceeds to benefit the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, Explorer Post 2005, a nonprofit organization.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Financial Recovery is a division under the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. The Financial Recovery Division regains monies from those who have exhausted resources throughout the judicial process. The authorization for the recovery of spent resources is by court order. These are resources initially funded by taxpayers. Financial Recovery Division's goal is to assist in making the county and taxpayers whole by replenishing funds into the budget to optimize services to the public. For more information, please visit the El Paso County website. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, 1331 North Fabens Street, Fabens, Texas 79838. Roden Bridge Canatyo Warehouse, 191 Canatyo Avenue, Canatyo, Texas 79835. Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938.
The Information Technology Department would like to remind users not to take the bait. Phishing is an attempt to obtain sensitive information such as usernames, passwords, and credit card details, often for malicious reasons by masquerading as a trustworthy entity in electronic communications. Phishing emails may contain links to websites that are infected with malware. Remember, do not open attachments or click on links from untrusted sources. Never send personal information in an email and keep your firewall and antivirus software updated.
Did you know the County of El Paso is purchasing?
I think we're ready, Mr. Nava.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, Court has reconvened into regular open session. Item number 14, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the Criminal Justice Coordinator Director, CAOP 17392.
Good afternoon, Joanne Vernal County Attorney. Judge Commissioners, we are requesting a motion to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the separation agreement with the Criminal Justice Coordination Director in CAOP 17392.
Samudh?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries. And item number 15, discuss and take action on the pending claim of Rodolfo F. Rodriguez, Sr., County Attorney's File Number 023317LC. Could we please have a motion to postpone this item and executive session, item 13D, for one week?
Samudh.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I believe that concludes today's agenda, Mr. Nava?
Yes, Judge.
Before we, before, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item... Eleven?
Reconsider item number 11. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The reason I made the motion to reconsider is, I was looking at the backup and on the parking for the special events, we, I thought we had talked about a three-tier parking and so between 1:00 and 7:50, I thought we were going to leave the fee at $2 and then between 7:50 and 3K to 5 and then above 3K to 10. But here on the backup it says that the, between 1:00 and 7:50 is up to $5. And so, I don't know if you'll remember with the conversation we had on Thursday, but it seems to me we talked about a three-tier and I'd like to, I'd like to propose that we keep the parking fee at $2 if under 7:50, if the event is under 750 people, or cars.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
So just to be clear then, the motion would be to approve and authorize the new fee schedule for parks and special events with the sport park fees to take effect on January 1st, 2018, and other fees to be effective November 1st, 2017, with the caveat that the parking fees for events from 1:00 to 7:50 be at $2, Commissioner?
Yes, for, yes. So if the estimated daily attendance is between 1 and 749 vehicles, then it will be at $2.
Okay.
Instead of 5.
And the remaining fees to remain in place is provided in the backup?
Yeah, what, and, you know, no other changes to what we approved earlier, earlier today?
I mean, I think the backup item, I don't know if some of it is updated and some of it isn't, but that's why I raised the question regarding the pools, is that on Thursday we agreed to keep the pools and the outlying areas the same?
Right.
That's not reflected in the backup. So I guess whatever was agreed upon by Commissioners' Court on Thursday, I guess should be the... I don't know if that, but the backup item, that's why I raised that question earlier, is that the backup doesn't reflect what we discussed on Thursday?
And then, if that's the case, Commissioner, I do recall a conversation from the special meeting. My understanding was the berates for escarate were to be at $5, and then for all other county pools, we remained at the $2 fee?
No, at escarate, it would be raised to $3. It used to be, the general admission was at $2 and we spoke about raising it to 3, and the junior from $1 to 2, and senior from 1 to 2, military from 1 to 2, but that was just at escarate, not at the other pools.
If you wish also, if we want more clarification, because the department head is not here, Ms. Palacios, we can postpone it to get that clarification for a week, just to make it clear and have the backup be consistent with what those discussions were.
I'd like to do that. I feel like we need to get the most up-to-date backup, and so we could postpone this a week so that that is reflected in the backup, so there's no question as to the fees, and all of us can go back and evaluate our notes from Thursday's meeting as well to make sure everything is captured. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me.
Even though we have a, we have a motion and a second, can we disregard that?
It would be to-
Yeah, we can. I'll rescind my, my motion. Thank you.
I rescind my, my, my other.
Your second.
My second.
So, so, so the motion would be to-
Postpone?
To post, to postpone and not, not make any of the changes that we voted on earlier, earlier today until we see the correct backup for next week. Second.
So postpone for one week to get the Public Works Director?
Could we add to that motion to rescind the previous motion? Because earlier, right. I just wanted to make that clear.
So rescind the previous motion and postpone for one week?
Right, and that would have been the earlier motion made earlier today where you all had approved the fee schedule, is what I'm referring to.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vogt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that concludes today's agenda. So, we're adjourned. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:16 p.m.